Good evening. And welcome to this regular meeting of the Helotus City Council. It is September 25th, 2014, and we're underway at 7:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everyone here. And please remind you that if you have a cellphone or other electronic communication device, if you would, please turn it to off, silent, or vibrate. And if you could keep from texting or having conversations with other folks in the room, we'd sure appreciate it. We'll get underway tonight with, first up on the agenda, the invocation. And tonight, council member Byes will be handling that. And then we'll do the pledge to the American and Texas flag. So if you will stand for the invocation and pledges.
Let us give thanks for all the blessings, opportunities, and challenges you have given us. Guide us with your strength and wisdom so we can make the right decisions for all the citizens of Helotus. As we finalize our next fiscal year budget today, allow us to be fair to all our employees along with doing what is right to keep our city viable for years to come. For those that are not able to be with their family and loved ones because of military service, we pray for your quick and safe return. May we give our best always and be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and
And before we continue, for those of you that have noticed, just want to assure you we have not added a new council member to the council, but we have Susan Wooton down here. She's our city treasurer. And we ask her to sit in on tonight's budget discussions. Next up, we have a proclamation. And this is to be presented to Chief Dottry for National Fire Prevention Week dated October 5th through 11th. So Chief, if you would, from up front.
This proclamation says smoke alarms save lives. Test yours every month on National Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Helotus Fire Department, firefighters and firefighter paramedics are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education. And whereas in 1911, the International Fire Marshal Association established Fire Prevention Week to commemorate the great Chicago fire that in 1871 killed more than 250 people and left 100,000 homeless, destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres. And whereas in 1920, President Woodrow Wilson issued the first National Fire Prevention Day proclamation, and according to the National Archives and Records Administration's Library and Information Center, Fire Prevention Week is the longest-running public health and safety observance on record. And whereas the National Fire Prevention 2014 theme is smoke alarms save lives. Test yours every month. Remind us to test our smoke alarms monthly because almost 60% of reported home fire deaths from 2007 to 2011 resulted from fires in homes with no smoke alarms or with non-working smoke alarms. A working smoke alarm and working smoke alarms reduce fire-related deaths by half. Now therefore, I compensate through craft on behalf of the members of City Council and by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Helotus, Texas, to hereby proclaim October 5th to the 11th, 2014 as National Fire Prevention Week, and urge residents to check their smoke alarms monthly, urge everyone to support the public safety activities and efforts of our Helotus Fire Department and witness whereof. I have set my hand and seal to this document. Chief, keep protecting us. Do a good job and all you guys do that long. Got it?
Thanks. Thank you. Say something.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I would like to mention that the theme is not only to have a smoke alarm, but it's important that it works, obviously. Don't give yourself a false sense of security thinking that you have a smoke alarm, but the battery's dead or it's not working. Smoke detectors, not only should you replace the batteries at least once a year if it's a battery-operated, all smoke detectors should be replaced every 10 years, at least every 10 years. And remember, a working smoke alarm increases your chance of surviving a fire in your home by 50%. So keep those smoke alarms working. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next up, we have some public hearings. We will open Agenda Item 3 at 7:06. This public hearing is to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on a resolution by the City Council of the City of Helotus, Texas approving appropriations for the City of Helotus Economic Development Corporation's fiscal year ending 2015, operating in capital budgets beginning October 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2015, to support the EDC's programs. Projects is defined by Article 5190.6 of the Development Corporation Act of 1979, Sections 2 and 4B of Vernon's Texas Civil Statutes and Cooperatives. Grace, did we have anyone sign up? Okay. No one signed up to speak, so we will close this public hearing at 7:07. And we will open Item 4, which is another public hearing, at 7:07. This public hearing is to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on proposed City of Helotus, Texas FYE fiscal year-end 2015 budgets, including but not limited to the General Fund, Debt Service Fund, Capital Replacement Fund, Dispatch and Emergency Medical Service Proprietary Funds, Household Hazardous Waste Fund, Municipal Court Building Security and Technology Funds, Police Department Explorer Posts, Federal and State Forfeiture and Training and Education Funds, PEG Public Access Fund, and School Safety Fund budgets. Grace, same. No one signed up to speak at this public hearing, so we will close it at 7:08. And we will have our third public hearing, Item Number 5, open at 7:08. This public hearing is to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on the adoption of a proposed tax year 2014 ad valorem property tax rate. Nobody, Grace? Okay, we will close this public hearing, Item Number 5, at 7:09. Next up, we have our open session, which is citizens to be heard. No one, Grace? No citizens signed up to speak, so we will move right on to the consent agenda. For those of you who do not know what a consent agenda is, it's just a grouping of agenda items that are figured to be fairly routine by the staff and myself. And so they're lumped together to hopefully be handled as one grouping to make the meeting a little more efficient. However, if a council member has a question on any of these items, they can ask it. If it can be answered in a brief fashion, we will address that question. Otherwise, they can ask that that item be pulled for further and full discussion. And then, in that case, the item will be pulled from the consent agenda and moved into the individual items to be considered as an agenda item there. So that being said, I will ask council, are there any questions on any of the items? No questions, I would ask then any discussion or any request to pull an item. No pulls? Okay, that being done and confirmed, then I would ask for a motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda Items 7 through 13.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve Consent Agenda Items 7 through 13 as written.
We have a motion from Fredericks. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Fredericks, a second from Byes to approve Consent Agenda Items 7 through 13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Consent Agenda Items 7 through 13 are approved as written. That moves us to Item Number 14 for individual consideration. This is a discussion-only item, and we're asking for direction from council. This pertains to our revised amendments to our policies and procedures. And so this is no action required, therefore no motions are required, no seconds. So if you don't mind, we'll start off the discussion with Ed tonight. Ed, do you have any comments on policies and procedures? And Rick and I will address your questions.
Please, Mayor.
You want to do a quick?
I did want to go over, I have received some comments from council members, and so I did want to go through those comments first.
Let's do that then, and we'll come back to you, okay?
And I'm going to go through this document. First off, good evening. I did want to go through the document. Again, as I said, I have received comments from council members coming into the office speaking to me on several parts of this. And so the first comment I will say is that, first comment I've received was from Councilwoman Massey, who was concerned about the hiring and firing of line employees versus the chiefs and myself. And I think what she was concerned about was adding clarification on who does the firing and who does not do the firing, particularly how council is involved in those hiring and firing decisions. So that was one comment that I have received. I haven't, none of these comments, by the way, have been addressed yet. These are simply comments for food for thought at this point. It is my plan to bring this item back with the mayor's approval at least twice as a discussion item, or excuse me, one additional time as a discussion item, and then have it on the agenda as an approval item for council. Because I think this is a relatively thick document that it's going to take several iterations to go through. The second comment that I received was regarding the hiring process. The comment was to describe the selection-
Could you reference the page?
Oh, excuse me. It starts on page 7, under Chapter 7. The hiring process is to describe the selection process of an employee better, particularly the document to ensure that we are documenting the process as we hire that employee, whether we're doing background checks or whether we are doing drug testing, all of those sorts of things. We don't have, we are doing those things, however, we do not necessarily have paperwork that is showing that process. And so I have committed to including within this document a more thorough selection process. The third comment that I have received is on page 8, Chapter 8, Appointment and Changes in Employee Status. One council person was, I believe this was Councilmember Villanueva, about the three-versus-six-month probation period. His comment, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that we should not have a range of probationary periods. And I believe the comment was he was, he would be satisfied with a three-month probation versus a six-month probation period. Is that correct? The fourth comment that I received is a general comment questioning why in certain places it says department head and why in certain places it says department head or supervisor. You will notice that in the firing, or excuse me, in the discipline sections, HR and myself only listed the department head as the hiring, excuse me, the firing or discipline authority. Now, that doesn't mean that a supervisor can't recommend the department head, but we felt that was a sufficient level of discipline for an employee, that it required department head approval. In other sections of this document, it says department head or supervisor. Why? There are certain departments that are run much more heavily or managed much more heavily by a supervisor. One good example would be a dispatch supervisor position. And so in those situations, I typically defer more readily to that supervisor's opinion on things with regard to their personnel versus my own opinion on things. And so in those cases, I put department head or supervisor. But when it comes to discipline, again, I thought it was important that the department head be put into the loop on that. And so that is, that is a general comment throughout the entire document. Again, I received a secondary concern about interjecting City Council somewhere in the appeals process. There was some discussion about, do we do that for all employees? Do we do that for certain employees? Or do we not do it at all? Or do we correct certain portions of the council's policies, procedures? Not correct, but do we ensure that council policies and procedures read exactly as the personnel policies and procedures? And so that was a concern, again, brought up by Councilman Fredericks and Councilman Villanueva. And that appeals process or complaints appeals process starts on page 45, Chapter 20. Another concern that was brought up under Chapter 20 on the complaints appeals process was to ensure that a copy of, and this is not specific in here, and I think it's a good point, to ensure that the HR department and the department head receives a copy of a written appeal from the employee to make sure that it is not only on file with HR and with the department head. Currently, it's, well, in practice, it's given to the department head, and that department head is supposed to file it with HR as well. And the comment that was received was that we just should put this in language in the document, that the employee must file it with both entities. Another concern that was brought up was under Section 20.2, to make it specific or explicit that the employee who is filing a complaint or appeal stays in the same position and at the current pay rate during that appeal process, however long that appeal process Those were the general comments that I have received to date.
Do you have anything of your own to add?
The only thing I will add on this is just to commend the HR department, which consists of Felicia Novan and Judy Henkel. They worked with myself on this document over the course of six to eight months, I believe, and I think they did an exceptional job at going through the minutia of this document. It was then sent out to all the department heads and supervisors for comment. We incorporated as much as possible their comments into this document. And so it was a lengthy process before it got to this point. I'm positive that there are things in here that still need to be tweaked, but you can only tweak a document so much before, before your eyes start crossing. And so that's why we wanted to get it in front of you, to get some additional comments.
Thanks. Ed?
A great job. I was visiting with Rick yesterday, just to say, there's so much here in this policies and procedures, and, you know, we can't, like an ordinance, we can't blanket, you know, cover all the problematic areas that may arise and cover all the situations. So this is going to be a good document to continue to work on. And I think the, as Rick said, the HR and everyone in this process has done a great job. I just hope that we continue to work on it and address some of the, you know, tie up some of the loose ends in these policies that we have and have experienced in the past. That's, thanks.
Cindy?
One of the things that Rick brought up was that what somebody was mentioning, should the city council get involved in the appeals process? So my question is, how many employees appeal a termination? A year, in a year, for example?
It wouldn't be specific to a termination. It would be appeal of any grievance that that employee-
Any display reaction?
-thought that they were enduring. I'd say one, one employee a year, maybe in a bad year, two employees, but typically probably one a year. Correct?
Yeah, since I've been here, I would say I've seen four or five come to me that I've answered.
Okay. So I would like to question, or, you know, the, why the city council would need to be involved in that level? I understand us being involved, or the city council being involved, you know, the top heads of each of those, you know, the entities, the city administrator, the fire chief and the police chief, but people under that, I'm not sure why the city council would need to be involved in the appeal.
I don't-
And I was just wondering, who brought it up and why? What was the thinking involved in that?
It wasn't mine.
I can kind of answer that. My intent, when I brought that up to Rick, was not to, not to micromanage the department heads. Really, it was really for more, maybe, department heads, chiefs, and possibly, and we kind of open that for discussion, employees that had a high tenure. So maybe they've been here 10 years or so. And so that was my intent. My intent was not to second-guess the chiefs on disciplining or having to get rid of a employee that wasn't performing their duties. That wasn't my intent. But that, I just, that was my thought process, is really, if the chiefs or Rick or the administrator, those guys, I think we should be involved in that. And I think we, right, we hire the chiefs and they serve as a pleasure at the council.
Yeah.
So that's what our intent was.
Historically, and I don't know if it's in the code or not, we can check, but the council would be involved in the city administrator, city secretary, and the two chiefs, police and fire. And in the contract, people that we have, like Susan, the arborist, the building inspector, those folks, when they come on board, the council would approve their contract. But regular employees, in my opinion, should be handled by the chiefs and their supervisors. And then it also, if it comes to a grievance on a termination or otherwise, if the employee requests it, I never meet with an employee unless I have HR there, the attorney if necessary, if I feel it's necessary, and usually Rick, and then me, and then the employee, so that it's not just me with the employee. And we also get the input from HR and the attorneys. So it's a little beyond the things we have to consider, the scope of what a council action would be for a regular employee.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, I just don't, I don't think that it's the responsibility of the council to get involved at that level.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
So that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Newly noted. Alex?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had one question I was looking through here with regard to, I know that in a couple years past, we've had the pay increases that are associated with the budgetary process, which we decide and undertake effective on a particular date. We also have, this year, later in this meeting, a discussion about the Option 1, Option 2, lump sum payment, which of course is, both of these are generally linked to favorable performance evaluation. I was looking in the document, and in particular on page 38, about employee performance appraisal, and I didn't see, other than the requirement of a fixed date following the probationary period, I didn't see a date certain as to when performance evaluations must be performed. It just says on an annual basis, but it doesn't identify a particular date involved. And I'm questioning if the pay raises and/or lump sum bonus is contingent upon a favorable performance evaluation, how can we make that decision if we don't know specifically when the evaluation must be completed by? So is this something that, I mean, maybe it's not in this document, or it's somewhere else in the document, but I didn't see it. And should it be indicated when, so that it can be taken into consideration when we go through the budget? That was really a question I had.
Before an employee can receive an increase in salary, whether or not it's requested by the supervisor or department head, an evaluation needs to be in. We have in the past set a deadline that we try to get the evaluations. That's not always met, and that's something that we're still looking at how to solve. My thoughts here for next year is when the department heads submit their budget requests, which is done early on in the process, that they will be required to at least include in that budget request any pay increases for any of their employees in their department. The evaluation then would be not necessarily due at that time. We just want a heads-up on who is going to be recommended for a pay increase. And then it will leave it up to the department heads to come back with any evaluation before that increase goes into effect.
I just, I just think that before the department head could request a budget, they would need to know, for salary increases, they would need to know who's going to get one or not. And if we don't do the performance evaluations until after the budget process, it seems a little bit cart before the horse.
It's a good point. My thinking is that he would know who he's going to request an increase for, and the evaluation would come. How, what date have we been working for those evaluations, Ray?
Well, let me, let me refer you to Chapter 5, which is page 6, which specifically talks about grade and step policy. It does not give a definitive date, but what it does do is it says, "Department head shall not request step and grade adjustments for employees," and this is the second paragraph, "without first having completed evaluations on applicable personnel within the preceding 12 months." So we make sure that before anybody receives a step and grade adjustment or any, and most of the time, that's when we do salary changes, that they have to have on file within that preceding 12 months an employee evaluation justifying the need for the increase. It does not give a date certain, though. So the way in practice this works is that all in, when, the month of September really is the time that we do evaluations, because we know that come October 1, employees are going to want their pay adjustments. Okay? So we try to get those completed before the end of September, so that come October 1, we can, we can put those pay adjustments on file, given the evaluation being completed.
So is it safe to say then, that given that Tuesday or Wednesday of next week is October 1, they're all in and done?
Yes.
They are either all in and done, or the employee does not receive their, their salary adjustment.
So by de facto, the, this, which is a new paragraph to our procedure. It's in red, that's new?
Yes.
Well, this was the grade and step policy that was adopted by council, but this is the first time it's been incorporated into the personnel policy.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, next year, we'll be looking at the grade and step system and making revisions if they're necessary, as we did two years ago, or last year, I guess it was. And so we'll be tightening up on some of this stuff.
Good. Thank you.
We probably need to try and address that in this one before it comes up for discussion again, Rick, and tie that down a little better. Anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
Paul? No. You good?
I had a question about, on page 5. There's a, shouldn't, in the middle of paragraph, shouldn't it be, shouldn't the 12 months been striked out, struck out and put 24 months?
Yeah, already told.
Oh, you already did that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then my next one was, was page 6, but you've already covered that. Let me see here. Page 8, on the, you've taken out the drug alcohol test. I've noticed it's been placed somewhere else. Is that, is, what is the reason for taking the drug and alcohol test out?
Well, we took drug alcohol test, we put drugs screening.
So, but that, but drug, but alcohol is part of that screening?
Yes.
And why was it, okay, just taken out for, because it's already in there?
Maybe we just didn't have the wording.
Okay. And then I had something on page-
All of them are exactly the way.
Okay. And I had something on page 29. Let me see what that was. Why was the employees may use training leave to attend job-related seminars at the direction of their department head deleted?
Okay, Jim?
I'm on page 29.
We do not have anything such as training leave.
That's, that's, they're, I mean, they just, they just go on duty. Right.
They just go in their regular hours, but they're on regular hours because they're due, they wouldn't be in training, but for their jobs, so.
Okay.
So we don't have anything.
So it just, that's why I was taking, I was, we really don't have training leave.
That is correct.
Okay. And then I had one more thing. Okay, and then I had one more thing on page forty-eight. Why was the recall, I hope this never happens where we have to let employees go, stuff like that, but why was the whole recall item taken out? Or you can address it later, page forty-eight.
Forty-eight, recall.
Thank you.
Or you can just look at it later, I guess, Rick, if that's...
Yeah, let me, let me look back into that. My initial impression is we took it out because... Let me get back to doing that, I don't...
Well, to me, to me, it seems like we should have some kind of recall procedure. You know, hopefully this will never happen to us, but if it does, to me, we should have some type of recall procedure in place to address that. So just...
Yeah, I'll look, I'll look into why that was taken out.
Okay, that's all I had.
And we also talked about doing a table of contents, so that it'll be a little easier to find stuff in the deal. And so, next time it comes to you, we should have a table of contents in here also. Anything else from anybody? I would like to encourage you that if, as you read through this, please continue to let Rick, or Grace, or Judy Hinkle know of any other comments you have, or just write them down and bring them by, so that we can continue to have your input in this. And I know it's not the most exciting document to read through. It was a task for me, I know when I went through it, but we appreciate you looking at it and giving us all the thoughts that you have. Okay? All right. Next up, item fifteen. Rick, why don't you just touch on this? This has to do with an interlocal agreement between the city and Bear County. And just to refresh everyone on what we're accomplishing here and why.
Sure.
And then we'll take a motion and second to discuss and take action.
If you recall, council, we recently adopted a revised interlocal agreement for the regulation of subdivisions in our ETJ between us and Bear County, specifically that incorporated residential building permits within, or itemized residential building permits being under our purview in our ETJ, and the county taking over exclusively commercial control or regulation of those types of developments. What we have done here is essentially clean up the language in our code of ordinances to make it clear that the county is doing commercial and that the city of Halotas is doing residential. Residential being defined as anything with three or fewer units, residential units in one building. Most of it's going to be single-family residential. It may include townhouse where there's two, or a duplex where there's two developments, but anything three and under, we would take care of. Anything four and over, the county would take care of.
Okay, thanks. So we'll have a motion, please, and a second to open discussion and action.
Mayor, make a motion that we discuss and take action on agenda item fifteen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from buys, a second from blue. Bert, it's your motion, you're first up.
I don't have any questions about it, I'm for it.
Okay, Alex?
I am as well, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Ed?
I'm for it, no questions.
Okay, Paul?
No, sir.
Cindy? Okay, no discussion on this? We will call the question, all in favor say aye of approving this item?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. The item number fifteen, approving the ordinance of the, setting up the interlocal agreement between the city of Halotas and Bear County is hereby approved. Item sixteen. This is the EDC's budget, so we'll take a motion and a second to open discussion and possible action, and Rick can address any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we discuss and take action on item number sixteen, as written.
We have a motion from Massey, we have a second.
Second.
Second from Fredericks, to discuss and take action on the Halotas Economic Development Corporation's budget for this fiscal, fiscal year. Cindy, you're up first.
Mr. Mayor, the EDC had a very lively discussion over this budget, and they, they came to an agreement, and I think they did a great job. And of course, I am on the EDC, so.
Okay. Paul, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Paul?
The only thing I can say is, is, we had, y'all had put in for the grants for small business, I know that's a difficult area, difficult area to do, to address for small businesses. And I hope the vetting process is quite extensive, because I know that's becoming quite unpopular to the public. And I believe it's necessary, I'm in favor of it, but I know it's becoming unpopular. So I just make sure that we're vetting that as much as we can.
May I address something? The last council meeting, a citizen came up and referenced the ten thousand dollars that was given to cha-chas. And the following day, I was chastised by staff because I didn't bring up the fact that that ten thousand dollars that was given to cha-chas was primarily for refrigeration units. And those refrigeration units are already, are still being used by the House of Blooms. So I wanted to make that clear, that that money that was invested into that business is still, in that building are still being used.
Thank you.
I didn't either until the following day.
Bert?
I also am on the EDC, and I think it was a pretty spirited meeting, and I think we've got it right.
Ed, it?
No comment.
Alex?
No, sir.
Ed? Okay, discussion is finished on item sixteen, the EDC budget. So we'll go to the question, all in favor of approving the item as written on the EDC's budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And item sixteen and the resolution for the Economic Development Corporation's budget is approved. Rick, we'll go ahead and do a quick review of the updates to the budget documents, again, to bring our new revenues and our new expenses up to date. And then when he's finished, we'll address your questions and have our discussion.
Okay, if you would in your budget packet, please turn to tab number six. Tab number six is on the salary component of the budget. What I have done here this time, because again, there are two options for salaries this year, is I have broken that down between option number one and option number two. Both are lump sums. Option number one is the formula that we have presented at the prior meeting. Option number two is equivalent to a one step, which is thirteen hundred and forty-eight dollars across all employees. Currently, within the overall salary budget, we are at three point eight nine million dollars for salaries. The total salary, and that's option one. Option two, you would be at three point nine four million dollars, or an additional forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents. I will say that we included in the original budget proposal that if you wish to go to option number two, you would have to amend the budget by that forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents. And we included a recommendation to eliminate one life pack at thirty-five thousand, and then an eight thousand, excuse me, eight thousand dollars out of the streets and drainage, excuse me, streets budget, and six thousand dollars out of the drainage budget for the subsequent fiscal year. Let me just make sure I'm correct in that. Eight thousand dollars for street maintenance and five thousand, excuse me, for drainage maintenance, which equals forty-eight thousand dollars. Switching to, there were no substantive changes in either option one or option two that are presented to you from the last council meeting. They're exactly the same. Tab number seven.
Rick, would you just take a minute or two and once again explain on option one, that the five hundred goes to people at or above their EMVs? And how it's calculated to where people further below will receive more?
I will do that generally.
Yes, just real brief.
Option number one, essentially, there's two components of option number one. Either you make, your current salary or your proposed salary is over the estimated market value, and then that employee would receive a lump sum benefit of five hundred dollars in December of next fiscal year. If your salary is below that position's estimated market value, it would make a percentage, it would make a base of five hundred plus a percentage. That percentage is based on how far away you are from your estimated market value, and how that interrelates with one step, the thirteen hundred and forty-eight dollars. So it's essentially five hundred dollars plus additional money, and that amount of money grows depending on how far away you are from your estimated market value.
Good, thanks.
Switching to tab number eight, excuse me, switching to tab number seven. Tab number seven is the general fund budget. And I'm going to go through each one of these line items to show you how they have changed compared to the last submittal or two weeks ago. Looking at the top, the total beginning fund balance as of October one has increased by a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the proposed FY fifteen, up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The majority of that is related to, if you recall, I had a portion of, or a lump sum of money within the building permits component that was related to possible litigation. Because we are at the end of the fiscal year, I know that we will not have to pay that by the end of the fiscal year, or we may not have to pay it at all, and so I've taken that out of the budget. That therefore has increased the end of this fiscal year's fund balance, and so it has transferred to the subsequent fiscal year's beginning fund balance, okay? Under ad valorem tax revenue. Ad valorem tax revenue increased by approximately seven hundred dollars. Non-property tax revenue decreased, which primarily consists of sales tax revenue, decreased by thirteen hundred and fifty-four dollars. Franchise tax revenue over last submittal has decreased by thirty-three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Before you go on, are we looking at?
You're looking at the...
Fiscal year two thousand and fourteen?
No, you're looking at fiscal year twenty fifteen, the proposed budget.
Oh, okay.
How that compares to the, to the last time, yes, ma'am. Key here, and I want to clue you in, the electric franchise tax revenue of the three hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars does include the additional one percent that is on subsequent, a subsequent agenda item, namely item twenty-one. So it does include that additional one percent. That additional one percent, again, is going from four point five to five point five of gross electric revenues, and that is equivalent to sixty-five thousand, approximately sixty-five thousand dollars over the four point, four point five percent. Other contract revenue. Other contract revenue stayed stable. License and fee revenue increased by seventy-three thousand, five ninety-nine. That is related to building permits. Court fine and fee revenue decreased by forty-seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. And miscellaneous income revenue increased by eight thousand, approximately eight thousand dollars. Dispatch and EMS revenue decreased by twenty-nine hundred dollars. And total income overall from two weeks ago has increased by seventy thousand, twenty-seven dollars. Switching to expenses. City council expenditures from last submittal have remained stable at thirty-one hundred and forty-two dollars. Administrative expenditures increased by fifteen thousand, or proposed expenditures increased by fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. City secretary expenditures have increased by sixty-two hundred and forty-five dollars. Municipal court expenditures have increased by forty-three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Human resources has increased by a nominal two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And development services have increased by relatively the same amount, at two hundred and ninety-one dollars. Animal control, public works, and code enforcement expenditures under the proposed have increased by eight thousand, ninety-two dollars. Buildings and grounds expenditures have increased by ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. And police department expenditures have increased by ten thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Fire department expenditures have increased by nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. And EMS expenditures have increased by two thousand, approximately two thousand and seven hundred dollars. Dispatch expenditures have increased by nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. So that equals the exact same amount as the increase in income, which is seventy thousand, twenty-seven dollars. The net income, again, is zero, meaning the budget is balanced. It does incorporate, again, the EMS department and the dispatch department within the general fund. So if approved, proprietary funds would go away. Net income at the end of this fiscal year, so you're looking at year-end estimate for two thousand and fourteen, is proposed to be at two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the black, going from the approved budget of three million, sixty-two dollars, four hundred and fifty, excuse me, three million, sixty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. It looks like we're going to be ahead of that at three million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. So, that is tab number seven. Tab number eight is on the interest and sinking fund, and I'm going to go relatively quickly through these remaining tasks because almost all of them are identical from the last submittal to you. But tab number eight is the interest and sinking fund. Revenues and expenditures remain the same, and the ending fund balance remained the same as well. Tab number ten. Tab number ten is capital replacement fund. The revenues have decreased by a hundred and ninety-one dollars. The expenditures have increased by eighty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. That increase is related to, again, the EDC, because of the issues that we were having on the engineering, has not spent their total contract amount, and so we're pushing the remaining contract amount into the next fiscal year. So the two hundred and five thousand, eight hundred dollars that you see for Economic Development Corporation, that is all, well, primarily all for our contract with LNV Engineering to finish the water and sewer line, and that's, that's why the increase there. Item number ten. Item number ten is municipal court security and technology. Both funds are identical to the last submittal. Item number eleven. Item number eleven is PEG, or Public Access Channel. Income remains stable at fifteen thousand dollars. We are expecting an increase in expenditures of thirty, excuse me, three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars over the last submittal, and the ending fund balance is remaining, is proposed to remain the same. Tab twelve. Tab twelve is the police training and education fund. There are no changes on this document from the last submittal. Tab thirteen. Tab thirteen is a, consists of a variety of funds. First, that I'm looking at is the school safety fund. School safety fund is expected, under income, to remain the same, and under expenditures, to be increased by eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. That... The eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars is the expenditure that you approved on the consent agenda for the fire departments. Going ahead to police department forfeiture, state and federal. Those, both funds remained the same and have not changed over the last two weeks. Police Department Explorer Post, which is a fiduciary account, has remained the same. And the household hazardous waste fund, if approved, is expected to, the income is expected to increase by six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars over the last submittal, and that is for revised estimates on collections from C six based upon the ordinance which is included in your budget, excuse me, included in your council packet under item twenty...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, thank you. So if you were to adopt that ordinance as presented, you would be looking at twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars every year. Expenditures remain the same at zero, because we were looking at it to be a biannual event, not starting... not starting this next fiscal year, and coincidentally, the fund balance increased by the same dollar amount, the sixty-seven, eighty-four. Those are the budget documents that I wanted to go through. Also, I do want to go over tab number fourteen in your budget packet, which is talking about the municipal fee schedule. In the original proposal, under tab fourteen, you'll see it says that the proposed FYE 2015 general budget incorporates the two point two seven percent increase in fees, which is equivalent to the cost of living adjustment taken from the CPI. There are exempted fees that, out of there, which means that these fees, we are not applying the two point two seven percent increase to. Therefore, this document matches the ordinance in your council packets under item number twenty that details each fee that we have on the fee schedule, whether it has no change or whether that two point two seven percent was applied to that line item. That's what I wanted to go through. Are there any questions?
We'll get questions here in just a second. If we could, then thanks, Rick. Have a motion and a second to open item seventeen for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we discuss and take action on agenda item seventeen.
Okay, we have a motion from Bies, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Fredericks. To discuss and take action on our ordinance of the city of Helotis concerning our budget. So, Bert, your motion, you're up.
Well, I know we have option one and option two that we've been looking at for the, I guess, what, the past three council meetings? I have an option three that I'd like to present to council. Pass these to you. I guess we'll call it option three. And then there's a chart of the stepping grade also. Does everybody get one?
Yeah.
I'd like to give one to Rick.
Yeah.
And one to Grace, please, if I have enough.
And Susan.
I don't have one for Susan, Susan doesn't. Rick needs one.
Is there one for Rick?
It's fine, I'll listen intently as I make the.
Well, you don't want, you don't want, okay, let's, we can wait then. Okay. I know we have some tough decisions to make today. I would like to suggest the following for the budget this year. In last year's budget, we included extra grade steps for thirteen employees in order to bring their salaries closer to their estimated market value, which is the EMV. This made their salaries more comparable to other cities in our area. At this time, we have two employees with current salaries below the salary range as indicated by our grade step chart. The positions are our city administrator and the dispatch supervisor. The wage and benefit salary report we received from the Texas Municipal League dated seven fifteen, two thousand and thirteen shows the salary ranges for city administrators/managers for seventeen cities that are comparable to Helotis. Only Elmandorf and Pleasanton pay their city administrator less than Helotis. According to our stepping grade chart, the low wage for the city administrator is ninety-three, ninety-three, four, the high is one fifty-five, seven, and the EMV, or the estimated market value, is one twenty-four, five ninety-seven. Our city administrator currently makes eighty-two, nine twenty-five, which is a grade five, step six. This is thirty-three point five percent below the estimated market value and eleven percent below the lower range, low end of wage range. We have several options with our stepping grade chart in order to get our city administrator position to at least the low end salary. I would like to see that position at least comparable to the city of Chavano Park, which pays around ninety-seven, four. I've got a breakdown here for, for the council from grade six, step four through grade six, step eight, and you can just read through that. I'll go to page two. My recommendation is the grade six, step eight. This would at least bring us in line with the city with less than half the population we have, Chavano Park, I don't mean to be picking on Chavano Park, but they have less the population, and this is still twenty-five, twenty-five, five below the estimated market value for this position. At least six suburban cities have hired new city administrators/city managers this year. I think it is important to, for Helotis to remain as competitive as possible within our region for this position. The other position below the salary range is the dispatch supervisor. We have hired a new dispatch supervisor who is still in her six-month probationary period that will end in November. Our stepping grade chart for this position shows a low of thirty-seven, seven, a high of sixty-two, eight, and an estimated market value of fifty-two, forty-three. The position is currently paying thirty-seven, zero seventy-four, which is a grade two, step two. I would like to propose at the end of her probationary period with a satisfactory evaluation to move the position to a G two, step three, which would be thirty-eight, four, and then after the twelve-month period is over, which I believe is in June, I propose another step increase to a G two, S four, which would be around thirty-eight, thirty, excuse me, thirty-nine, eight. This would allow for a two-step increase this fiscal year. If we approve these recommendations for this budget, I would void any lump sum payments for, for the city administrator and the dispatch supervisor positions. Okay, and then I have the approximate cost for the two salary increases, including benefits for the city administrator would be about nineteen, nine, for the dispatch supervisor, if we approve both steps, it'd be about three, three thousand, six hundred dollars. Last page. That total salary increase is around twenty-three, six. Funding for this proposal is, is not to purchase a LifePAC fifteen monitor defibrillator this budget. We still have three totally functioning LifePAC twelve monitor defibrillators that still have three to five years of life in them. Removing them from the EMS budget will save thirty-five thousand dollars. So you remove the approximate, this is all approximates, approximate salary increases for these two positions, and you end up with around eleven thousand, four hundred dollars. I myself would like to leave this with the EMS for capital improvements, but we can also move it to the general fund. As far as the option one or two, I prefer option one this year for our other employees because this is the best business decision for the city to me at this time. It pays a lump sum of five hundred dollars to those employees at or over their EMV, an additional compensation on a sliding scale for those under their EMV. This will give us the opportunity next year to adjust the grade and step system to add one-quarter steps between each step, something like A would be a quarter, B would be a half, C would be a three-quarter step. This will give department heads more latitude in compensating high-performing employees with more than lower or poorer performing employees. This would also eliminate the decision to commit a full step or more to all employees.
Anything else?
No. I don't have any problem with anything else in the budget.
Okay. A second, any discussion on budget or this proposal?
I was prepared to do the option one as councilman Bies, but I do believe that our city administrator position has been lacking for several years now, and it's gotten quite stark here in the past couple of years. So I'm in favor of this amended proposal.
Any other discussion?
Everything else, I'm fine.
Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am in also complete agreement with this. I've, the multiple things, one, of course, the, the adjustment to the immediate salary with the two positions in question, I think is, is long overdue, in particular with our city administrator. I, I don't have any question about the elimination of the lump sum part when, when the other part takes effect, if it does. With regard to the option one versus two, and I don't know if this is really three, but, because it doesn't address necessarily the one or two part, but I think that the option one is the one that we should indeed go with, with regard to all of our city employees. And as I've said for the three years since we implemented the stepping grade, I'm in complete agreement with the ability to further subdivide the stepping grade system to a smaller amount that makes it manageable, as Bert very, very well put it, to allow to have, it's, it's either all or nothing, and, and I don't think either of those approaches has worked well to this date, and I think if we can subdivide that into, you know, step and grade, A, B, C, et cetera, I think it's the right approach. I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this amendment. I presume it's taken in the form of an amendment to the original motion, which was the budget as presented.
Cindy?
I too am in agreement with this. I, I just want to kind of go back to when we, when we hired Rick. I remember, I've, I've had the privilege of working with our city administrator for many, many years, first when he was the EDC specialist, and it was from that position that he arrived, he became our city administrator. And I remember discussions at the time that we were starting him at too low a salary at that point, and that it was going to be really hard to catch up, and, and that has proven to be true. And we, we did that because we were, of course, being, you know, responsible with our, with our money, you know, with our taxpayer money, but also, yeah, he, even though he was a fabulous EDC specialist, we weren't, this would, this would have been his first position as a city administrator, and we were, you know, just wanted to, you know, make sure, and it's, it's proven to be, he's, you know, his, he's proven to be a very, very good city administrator, excellent. And, and it's the position as well, we, we, Chavano Park only has three thousand citizens, and we have, you know, more than double that amount, and for them to have, to pay their city administrator is, you know, so much more is insulting, you know, to our city administrator, who I think is, is, you know, quite, quite good. So anyway, I am definitely for this, and, and I think too, it is long overdue. And as far as the options, I, I'm for option one, the five hundred dollars, and then the EME for those who are below.
Okay, any other comments on any other part of the budget?
The only other thing, I want to make sure we're not voting on that hazardous waste as part of the budget.
No.
Okay.
Ed?
I'm in favor of option number one for all employees across the board, and I do agree with councilman Bies about catching up with the salary and making them competitive for the city administrator and dispatch supervisor. I guess my question is, councilman Bies said in order to kind of pay for this or account for this, we forego these LifePACs and the defibrillator, is that correct? Thirty-five thousand defibrillator allowance? If we go with that, is that factored into the budget? Is it in it currently, or is it something we got to make an adjustment to?
No, it, there's, there's thirty-five thousand in the EMS budget-
Yeah.
-for that piece of equipment.
Right.
So, the way I understood, Bert, we would remove that option, which would free up that thirty-five thousand.
Right.
He would use the cost of, we don't have the exact number, but around twenty-three or twenty-four thousand to take care of these two salary adjustments.
Right.
And changes in grade and step, and then the balance, whatever's left out of thirty-five, leave it in that EMS line item for use for any other piece of equipment that they might have a need for during the year.
That's what he cites as a net adjustment, eleven, three.
Right. Yeah, that, close to that, depending on how benefits line up with the-
With the salary.
With the salary.
Right.
That amount will be left, your proposal, that amount will be left in that line item.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other discussion on any other part of the budget?
No.
Okay. I had thought about this as just part of the discussion, but Alex, you bring up a good point. Since we're changing some numbers in the budget as proposed, we should probably handle this with an amendment. So Bert, if you don't mind, let me just review this, and if you agree, or would you rather go ahead?
No, no, go ahead.
Take your amendment. I, I just want to be sure that we're all clear, that you're proposing we stay with option one, a pay increase for everyone except the city administrator and the dispatch supervisor, and we would change the grade and step position for the city administrator from this, what it is currently, to a grade six, step eight at ninety-nine.
One oh five.
I think the chart says one oh seven.
One oh five, one oh five?
Was it, does it say one oh five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, at ninety-nine, one oh five, that's for the city administrator. And then at the end of a satisfactory probationary period with, with a, a positive evaluation on the dispatch supervisor, she will be raised one step to a grade two, step three, which will occur at the end of November, and then at the end of twelve months, still in this fiscal year, and in June of next year, she would be moved, again with a, a positive evaluation from a G two to an S four, correct?
Okay, I just guessed at June, is June correct?
Yes, she was hired in, in the end of June of this year.
Okay.
Or no, I'm sorry, the end of May, the end of May, which will put it right around the first part of June.
Okay.
Am I good so far?
Yes, I had one other question. Since we're going, since we might go with option one after we go, what we're going to do with this, we, do we put that money from the street maintenance and the, and the drainage back into the budget somewhere else?
It's already there.
It's already there.
That's untouched, that's just-
Okay.
That, that was conditioned upon option one being the, the option chosen.
Okay.
The only other clarity I would ask for here is, on these two positions, the city administrator and the dispatch supervisor, going with option one for all other employees, I would recommend, since we're having a step increase there, perhaps, that that lump sum payment in December would not occur for these two employees only.
It's already in there.
It is in there?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought I heard you say that, but I wasn't sure.
So if, if we, if we approve these recommendations for this budget, I would void any lump sum payments for the city administrator and dispatch supervisor.
I got that, okay, I remember you saying that. Okay, so does that cover the amended?
That, everything that I wanted.
Okay, so you want to make that, just, just-
With the-
Make that your amended?
Yes.
Amended motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Paul, you second that amendment? Okay, so, Rick, do you need to do anything, or we need to take some time for you to make adjustments, or are you okay with that?
Well, all these-
Everything should balance. The numbers are just going to change a little bit? Do we need to wait for you to make those changes now?
No, every, everything will balance, now the eleven thousand-
That's going to be a flexible number, depending on what the benefit-
Do you need, do you need this?
But that will, I have one, but that will remain within the EMS budget?
Correct.
Okay, so that will still be in the EMS budget, the remainder of the eleven thousand?
The only thing is, instead of thirty-five, it'll be thirty-five less whatever the salary-
So it'll be eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars?
More or less.
Uh, no, that, that balances, but I do, I do want to say that I feel a little bit like I'm in a deer in, in headlights here. I didn't expect any of this, and so-
Can I say something?
Um, I would like to say thank you for that, I really do appreciate it, and other, other than that, I'm at a loss of words, but thank you very much.
Yes, sure.
Rick, it wasn't for you, it was for the position, so.
Thank you.
Oh, man, that's cold.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I had one additional thing which might mess up Rick's numbers. The, and I don't know, because I've, I've just started to read what you've got for me, and I, while I agree in, in principle, the thirty-five thousand, which was in the budget for the, for the EMS, for the capital improvement, you've subtracted the additional, but did you also incorporate the elimination of the lump sum? Because if, because the original budget included lump sum for those two employees at their current number, which is probably, I'm going to guess, somewhere in the thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars, so that eleven, that eleven, three might actually be another thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars higher, so we want to make sure that we word this in such a way that it, whatever the number comes to, because the original budget included them getting the lump sum-
Yes.
But I didn't see that in the numbers presented tonight.
Yeah.
So it might be a little bit larger than the thirteen, or eleven.
Good call. So would that, we would just add that to the eleven?
That's fine, yeah.
And that would go into that line item for EMS? You understand what he's saying, Rick?
Yeah, so if the nine fifty, eight four plus-
Plus whatever you had in there for dispatch supervisor.
Plus eight fifty-three here.
So, so those two will be pulled from the salary chart and, and put into that line item for EMS, assuming that's where you want it to go.
Yes, yes, I mean, if that's what everybody else wants. Yes, yes, I mean, if that's what everybody else wants.
So, that's going to leave that line item still with about thirteen, fourteen thousand, depending on salary benefit. Okay, so everyone is clear on the amendment? Any other discussion on any other part of the budget? Okay, then we'll call the question. All in favor of approving the amended motion to include the salary increases for the city administrator and the dispatch supervisor, leaving the difference between that and the defibrillator in the EMS line item where it is now, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. That takes us to number eighteen. And here, we'll look for a motion and a discussion for possible action on the ordinance for the ad valorem property tax rate for tax year two thousand and fourteen. So, if we can get a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we discuss and take action on item number eighteen as written.
Okay, we have a motion from Massey. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Ed, was that you?
Yes.
A second from Villanueva. To discuss and take action on item number eighteen as written. If you recall, at our very first meeting on the budget, the tax rate was set at thirty-six point eight zero three-three per hundred, cents per hundred, and that was just to give us a number that we would not exceed, knowing full well that it can come in anywhere below that. And so, that being said, Rick, did you want to address this briefly? The way our current rate is in proportion to the effective rate, or cover anything else?
First off, I wanted to say that on the agenda, it's rated at point three-six eight zero three-three, which is the rollback rate.
Yes.
And so, included within your packets was the, because you adopted the budget at this point, is the existing tax rate, which is point three-five versus hundred dollar valuation. We had to put this on the agenda in this way, so that you would have latitude in which way council wanted to go. So, at this point, I think what you are asking is to adopt a tax rate equivalent to point three-five, where the debt service rate is now point zero seven eight four nine seven, and the maintenance and operations rate will be point two seven one five zero three, rather than what it is actually on the agenda. You can go down, if you recall, from an agenda item, but you can't go above. And that is included within your packets. Now, I did want, there are particular motions that have to be stated a particular way.
This is this sheet that says tax rate on it, and whoever makes the final motion will have to use this language as we understand.
And Grace, correct me if I'm, this has to be roll call, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what that means is every individual has to state whether it's an aye or a nay.
Correct.
But this current year is a unique year, because our current tax rate of point three-five is higher than the effective tax rate, and the effective tax rate is point three-four. If you go back to that page, is point three-four-two-four-one-three. Now, what state tax code says that if you adopt a tax rate that is higher than the effective tax rate, regardless of the fact you're not proposing to raise the tax rate, the motion has to be that I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate, which is point three-five-zero per hundred dollar valuation, which is effectively a two point one seven percent increase in the tax rate. I wanted to clarify what that means, because I disagree with the language that the state is making us use. The effective tax rate is simply the rate that you would have to adopt as a tax rate to make the same collections in a following fiscal year, as you did the prior fiscal year. So, the tax rate is actually staying the same at point three-five. But if you wanted to collect the same amount of property tax revenue, you would adopt the effective tax rate, okay? Which is lower than the current tax rate. So, I call exception to the fact that it is specifically saying a property, a percent increase in the tax rate. You are not increasing the tax rate, and I just want to make that clear. You are only collecting more money next fiscal year than you did this fiscal year at the same tax rate, because we have either had higher property tax valuations, which is done through Bear County appraisal, or you've had additions to the tax roll, and you had a huge addition to the tax roll this year in Walmart. This is the first year that you've received property tax revenues from that establishment. So, that is why the current tax rate is higher than the effective tax rate, because that same tax rate will generate more income for the city, which is precisely what we are trying to do from an economic development standpoint, which is to bring businesses into the city to generate not only sales tax, but increase property tax collections, so that we can fund city services and additional city services. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that the tax rate is not increasing at all if you adopt the current tax rate. Nonetheless, in the state's infinite wisdom, you must read it exactly as it is on that sheet.
Can I withdraw my?
Yeah, just to say. And the increase here, the way I was figuring that we could interpret it or understand it, is they're just telling us that since this year, our effective rate happens to be less than our current rate, that they're, would consider, or we could consider, this current rate as an increase over the effective rate, because that's the lower. It's kind of a funky way to do it, but, yeah, Cindy? That's right. The rate is staying, like Rick says, the same. If you guys adopt thirty-five cents per hundred, Cindy, you had something to ask?
I'm not sure what to put in this.
Well, you would just read, in other words, this would be an amendment to your original motion, and you would just read that, the I move part of that, the way the state has written it and requires us to say it. And that would be considered the amended motion, and you would specify the?
Yeah.
You would, it's on, it's on the sheet under eighteen in your notebook. If you're proposing to stay with thirty-five cents per hundred, then you can, you can just fill in the blanks as it's written on this agenda item, but make your motion comply with the motion from the state. Does that make sense?
No, this agenda item has thirty-six.
Go ahead.
Thirty-six eight oh three cents per one hundred, and that's not what I wanted to propose.
No, no. Read, read your, read that motion.
If you want to keep it at the current tax rate, you have to read this motion exactly as it's worded, where it says specify tax rate here, it's that. And where it says this long insert percentage by which the tax rate exceeds the effective tax rate, it's two point one seven, is that?
Hard to read, two point one seven percent?
It's under, it's on your, it's on your sheet there under tab eighteen.
That has to be the motion that you read.
Ed, did you have something you wanted to ask?
I thought just offering for maybe the increase.
The numbers.
The number.
Okay. So, if you choose to have your motion include the thirty-five cents per hundred, include the maintenance and operations and debt service on the sheet there under tab eighteen, and read your motion as was given to you, as that's required from the state, and then we'll take a roll call.
Okay.
Okay, you can get through this.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
We didn't do this last year.
No, because last year, the tax rate was higher, excuse me, lower than the effective tax.
This year, it's unusual. Our effective tax rate is less than our current tax rate. It usually doesn't work that way.
But, I mean, bottom line, for a property owner, they're still going to pay the same taxes.
Yes.
Unless your appraisal went up.
That is correct.
So, I don't, it doesn't make sense.
I understand that.
It's the state of Texas.
I mean, it really doesn't.
It doesn't, because they're equating collections to the tax rate, and I think that's improper. Nonetheless, I don't write the rules.
Okay.
The tax code's written that particular way, so you have to word it that way.
And Grace has worked very hard on getting us through this. So, just read that motion, read the numbers that you would just fill in on your, on the original deal here, and just substitute those numbers from eighteen, and we'll work our way through this and call this an amended motion.
Okay. I move, I'd like to amend my motion to say, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point three-five zero zero zero, which is effectively two point one seven percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay. And the tax rate you want to propose is thirty-five cents per hundred?
Thirty-five cents per hundred.
And would you please just read the numbers for the M and O and for the debt service?
The maintenance and operation numbers would be point twenty-seven one five oh three, and the debt service would be point zero seven eight four nine seven.
Okay, thank you very much. That's your amended motion. Ed, do you concur in your second?
I second it.
Okay. Okay, well done. Any discussion? Anybody? No? Okay. No discussion being asked for. We will go to the question. And this is going to be a roll call vote. And again, this is to, this is an amended motion, and it is to set the tax rate at thirty-five cents per hundred, which is two point one seven percent increase in the, in the tax rate.
Determine effectively.
Yeah, above the, above the effective rate. In which M and O is point two seven one five zero three cents per hundred, debt service is point zero seven eight four nine seven cents per hundred, and that makes up the total tax rate of thirty-five cents per hundred. So, Ed, we'll start with you. Your vote, please.
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Bird? Bird is an aye. Paul?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
We have five aye votes by roll call, and the tax rate is set at thirty-five cents per hundred, which once again is the same tax rate we had this year. Okay. That moves us on to number nineteen. And this is just a, an ordinance that is required, because our tax rate is higher than the effective tax rate, and we are raising more tax revenue as a result of that. So, if we can have a motion and a second for discussion and action on this ordinance, please.
Mr. Mayor? The move that we discuss and take action on item nineteen is written, please.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion from Villanueva and a second from Blue. So, Ed, it's your motion. Any comments or discussion, debate?
No comments.
Okay.
No comments.
Alex? Paul? Cindy? Okay. Then we will call the question on item number nineteen, an ordinance required because we're raising more revenue, even though we have the same tax rate. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Item number twenty. And this is an ordinance addressing our fee schedule, costs and fines included. And Rick, if you would, you don't have any explanation on, you already covered this.
Yes.
Okay. So, let's have a motion and a second, please, for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the move that we discuss and take action on item twenty is written.
Have a motion from Fredericks?
Second.
A second from Villanueva. Rick already pretty well covered the increases in the fees, but if you have any other questions or comments?
I do not.
Okay. Ed?
No comments.
Alex? Bird?
Yes, I have one question. On page four, the charges for the fire department service fees, are these fees, like, I mean, you know, heaven forbid anything ever happen to one of our citizens where this would be needed, the jaws of life and stuff like that. Are our citizens charged for this also? They are? Okay.
These fees are very rarely, to my knowledge, and the chief can speak to this, but very rarely do we utilize these fees.
I can see the EMS.
They're very infrequently used, but they, when they are applied, citizen or non-citizen, they're applied.
And the EMS fees are applied according to the schedule, and the collections are made by a third party.
Okay.
And that is not an amendment? I mean, that is the way that prior fee schedules have been assessed.
Okay. I can, I mean, just in my mind, I can see the EMS charges, but our citizens are already paying taxes. They're paying taxes for EMS also, I understand that. But to me, this right here, I don't think if they're a citizen, they should pay for this. Just my comments on this, just for this one part here, for the fire department services, for the JAWS and stuff like that. That is, you know, the, maybe the swift water rescue I can see, but the rest of it, you know, just the number one part. The other stuff I can see. That's just something that I.
Just as a suggestion to address your concerns, perhaps we can go ahead and approve the fee schedule as written, and then I'll ask the chief to put together some figures, and we can come back and look at this at a later date with the idea of perhaps making a change.
It would just be the fire department service fees and the number one.
We'll get some statistics on that and see how the fees are handled and the collection on those, and just see the frequency.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to council with that.
That's all I had.
Paul, anything else?
No, sir.
Cindy, any comments? Okay. No further questions or discussion. We'll call the question on item number twenty. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ordinance on agenda item number twenty is approved. Okay, that brings us to item twenty-one, discussion and action on an ordinance to amend the, or to add a, an additional fee to the street rental fee from CPS. So, if I can have a motion in a second, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we discuss and take action on agenda item twenty-one.
Okay, we have a motion from Byes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Villanueva. Okay, Bird, it's your motion.
This would just show up as a one percent surcharge on our CPS bill, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had.
Ed?
Is this the one percent we talked about in a prior council meeting? We're just solidifying that agreement?
Yes. Yes, the franchise agreement was changed at our request and several other cities to have the option to add the extra one percent. It was capped at one percent, and CPS agreed to allow us to do this. They will collect it and then bring it back to us at the same time the franchise fee is paid.
Fantastic.
And this amount, as Rick had mentioned, is, we calculated about sixty-five thousand, looking at the historical numbers, and that is included in our budget document.
Correct.
Alex, did you have any comments?
No, sir.
Paul?
No, sir.
Cindy? Okay, no further discussion. We will go to the question on item twenty-one. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance for payments to street rental is approved. That takes us to item number twenty-two, discussing an action on an ordinance to establish a household hazardous waste collection fee. And again, this is not part of our budget. However, there is a separate budget for this item that we've had in the budget documents all along. So, whether this goes up or down, it does not affect the budget. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we discuss and take action on item number twenty-two as written.
We have a motion from Massey and a second from Byes. Cindy, it's your motion.
I have some paperwork I'd like to pass out to my colleagues.
Okay.
There you go. Did you have a copy? Regarding the household hazardous waste disposal program, proposal to institute a quarterly fee to Halotas residents. In two thousand and eleven, the city of Halot- In two thousand eleven, the city of Halotas hosted a hazardous waste collection event at City Hall. The event, which was scheduled for nine to twelve on a Saturday, was extended to about two o'clock because of a long line of vehicles participating. It is estimated that about four hundred vehicles went through, and from that, thirteen point seventy-five tons of material was collected, and eighty-eight percent of that material was recycled or reused. The impetus for this event was a grant given by ACOG for twenty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. The actual cost of the event was thirty-two thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents. That is broken down on your, the last sheet on the back. So the city of Halotas paid five thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents of our taxpayer money for this free event that was open to everybody, not just citizens of Halotas. Two more grants have been allotted to Halotas for ACOG, one for an event that is scheduled for this Saturday, and another for next year. After that, the grants will no longer be available. The terms of the grants stipulate that the hazardous waste disposal program must be open to all people, not just Halotas citizens. This agenda item proposes that beginning this fiscal year, and I was just heard Mr. Schroeder said it was gonna be next fiscal year, the citizens of Halotas be required to pay a fee of a dollar fifty per quarter, and businesses to pay a two percent gross monthly fee that would be added to their C six trash collection bills. These revenues are expected to equal twenty-two thousand six hundred thirty-four per year to be used for a household hazardous waste disposal program that will occur every two years. I oppose the institution of such a fee for the following reasons. Number one, there is a free home pickup program for household hazardous waste for suburban cities and unincorporated Bear County residents funded already by Bear County taxpayers. Residents can use this service once a year to dispose of their hazardous waste, and I have attached a flyer to that effect on here. Number two, Goodwill Industries run, runs one of San Antonio's largest computer recycling programs. It accepts used hard drives, laptops, monitors, printers, basically anything that can be plugged into a computer. There is a Goodwill donation center at the shopping center at the southeast corner of Banderas Road and Loop sixteen oh four, just a couple of miles from our city limits. Number three, the fee, while minimal, will of necessity go up over the years and is unnecessary, given the already duplicated and free hazardous waste disposal services available to our residents. Four, once this fee is instituted, our taxpaying residents will expect to be able to participate in this event. I anticipate that a half-day program once every two years will not meet the standards that a taxpayer will expect. Such an event will by necessity have to expand to a minimum of a two-day, a two-day, day-long event to be available to our citizens, which will of course, which will of course drive up the costs. Number five, there are problems associated with having such an event and excluding anyone who is not a taxpaying resident of Halotas, which by necessity we have to do since our citizens would be funding the service. Number one, many people who live in this area and who have Halotas addresses believe they are taxpaying residents of our, our incorporated town. Having to turn away carloads of such people will be a PR nightmare, to say the least. There will have to be someone checking people's driver's licenses for their address information to make sure they are taxpaying residents. At a minimum, we can expect consternation and arguments when individuals discover they are not in our incorporated city limits and are asked to leave. Six, such a fee will not benefit all the citizens of Halotas. Many of our residents will not use this service. Unlike police, fire, and trash pickup, hazardous, hazardous waste disposal is not a service that is essential for the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. And for those who accumulate such waste material, there is already a free service available to them. Number seven, there is a, and final, there is a saying, no good deed goes unpunished. While I understand the motivations to provide another service to our citizens, I believe our city would do better to allow the hazardous waste collection program funded by ACOG to die a natural death. The disadvantages of continuing such a program far outweigh the benefits both for our citizens and for our city staff. We cannot be everything to our citizens, and I don't believe that our citizens expect us to be.
Thank you. Any other comments? From, from you, Cindy? That's it? Okay. Bert, it's your second?
Well, originally, I wanted to postpone this, uh, this agenda item till next meeting to see how Saturday's gonna go. But after reading your number five, that would really be a nightmare, trying to find out who actually lives in the city limits when they have a seven eight oh two three zip code. That would be probably impossible. So my thought on postponing this item till after Saturday is, I, I don't wanna propose that. I agree with Councilmember Massey.
Paul?
I agree with Councilmember Massey.
Alex?
I'll be honest, I was in favor of this until I think Council, Councilmember Massey has been very persuasive in her argument. While I do believe that there is something to be said about the, the need to pick up the hazardous waste and make sure that it doesn't get just dumped somewhere or thrown into the, into the trash can in some dark bag that they think will get away with, you know, I, I was not aware of the free program that, that is available. And if it is indeed convenient, I also agree with, with the others who said that trying to turn people away, once they've already taken all of the time to collect their stuff and get there and wait in line and then find out that they're not, I'm afraid they would probably do something very ill-advised with it. And, well, seriously, I mean, if you, if you bag it all up and bring it up here and then find out that you can't do anything with it, you've gone through all that effort, and it's very likely that you're just gonna find some other place to get rid of it. You're not gonna go back and put it in the cabinets and in the garage and shed and everything else where you found it. And again, you would be very unhappy, as I probably would as well. So I, I agree with her final result.
Ed?
I wasn't aware they had a free pickup program.
Yeah, we, we'd mentioned it before, but it went away for a short period of time. Evidently, they brought it back. Because we used it at one time years ago.
Yeah.
Or so.
And I did call, I called yesterday, and I said, is this program still available? Oh, yes, absolutely.
Well, I'm in agreement. I, I was ready to, you know, to approve this, but in light of, you know, this, this free service, and, you know, I think I'd, I'd rather just do it for free.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Cindy, great job. The reason this was brought to you guys as counsel is, we do get quite a few calls on this. I think what we'll do is, we'll direct staff to put this, uh, Bear County and this other stuff up on our website for people to refer to. But this is, this worked perfectly, the whole, whole idea of bringing items like this when we feel there is a need for discussion, is for you guys to, to come up and, and debate it and discuss it, and that's exactly what happened. So I think it's great. So with that being said, no other discussion, we will go to the question on item twenty-two, taking action on the ordinance establishing a household waste collection fee. So a yes vote would be in favor of establishment, a no vote will be to decline it or disapprove it. So all in favor, say aye? I expected crickets. All opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Motion is declined or disapproved. The ordinance for establishing a household hazardous waste collection fee is not approved. Okay, next up, we have item twenty-three. And this is our, our debt considerations, and we've gathered more information here, and Rick will go through some of our findings and our conclusions and our recommendations to you guys as counsel to consider. So Rick, the floor is yours.
Okay, if you recall, the last meeting we had was with Ann Berger-Entrigan from First Southwest Company, and we said that both Susan and myself, working with Mayor Schoolcraft, and, and just looking at the numbers, we would come back with a recommendation on whether we could or could not afford the full debt issuance that we are, that we originally proposed. And we have done that. And I will tell you, without going through this or just off the bat, that, that some of you are going to be disappointed, as I was, with this recommendation. Actually, I'm extremely disappointed, but the, as Susan told me, the numbers don't lie, and so it's our job to present to you what we believe the numbers are telling us. So with that said, I'm gonna go through this. Basically, it's a two-part process, this affordability study, okay? First one was a capacity analysis done by First Southwest. The second one was more of a financial nuts and bolts study that both Susan and myself did on this. First Southwest, the, what, what they give you when they look at a, whether a city can afford debt, is they look at, number one, whether you have capacity within your existing tax rate to raise taxes to a sufficient level to always pay your debt. Okay? That's what they are looking at. We do have that capacity within our, within our tax, current tax rate. Okay? They also look or compare, and this is all included within your packets, they compare our debt per capita currently versus other similarly, similarly sized cities, and they look at what our debt per capita will be with a new debt issuance and compare it with those same cities. Our debt per capita would be fine. We would be middle of the road compared to all the other cities that have similar budgets, similar populations to us. So that's the second thing that First Southwest can tell you. The third thing is that they can tell, they can tell us that an issuance of the five and a half million dollars worth of debt won't have a negative impact on the municipal standard and pores rating. Okay, which is good, but it still doesn't tell you whether you can afford to cut the check each year for these projects. And the last thing which they put in all of their memos to us is that, well, afford, and it's included in their emails, well, affordability is subjective. Well, that, with all due credit to First Southwest, it doesn't really cut it because it doesn't answer the question, can I afford this or can I not? I don't need to know affordability is subjective, I know that. I wanna know, can we cut the check with our current tax structure the way it is? Now, when we look at, what are the assumptions when we're, when we're going through these numbers? The first assumption that both we had and First Southwest had was that we would have a static tax rate of the current tax rate per one hundred dollars valuation, of point three five, because we don't wanna have to come in here at a staff level and tell you, in order to pay for this, you've gotta raise taxes. Okay? I don't think y'all would go along with it anyway. Second one is that we have a static interest and sinking tax rate of point one two four five zero zero per a hundred dollar valuation. This is the tax rate that you would have to go up to in order, and this is the interest and sinking portion, in order to fund the additional five and a half million dollars of, of debt. Okay? So what this means is that it's a point zero four five five five, three percent increase in the interest and sinking tax rate. Now, that does not necessarily mean that you have to raise taxes. Okay? What that can mean is that you have more money going to interest and sinking, and you have less money going into maintenance and operating. Which can be tolerable, but at what level can it be tolerable? And that's really what we're looking at here. Okay? We can tell you right off the bat that it is our firm belief that the EDC can afford the issuance of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And they can afford the debt service. The debt service is between thirty and forty thousand dollars for a year for the EDC. They can tolerate that. So none of this that I'm going to talk about any further is related to the projects that we have already assigned to the EDC. They can afford it. Okay? We also assume that we were talking about a twenty-year tax-exempt CFO issuance with a five-year call, which meant that after five years, we could call up those CFOs and pay them off early if we wanted to, which I think is what the direction council gave when they said that we would look at CFOs. We are also assuming that there's a static interest rate on those CFOs of three point three eight percent. That's the number that came from First Southwest for what the bonds would cost us. Okay? So we're assuming that that stays, that rate stays the same throughout that twenty-year period, telling you what your principal and interest payments are. And we also assumed, and this is the, this is the problematic part, that there is a stable, or excuse me, a static taxable assessed valuation in the city of Halotas, which I think is around seven hundred and forty-six million dollars in ta, total taxable valuation. Now, we know full well that that's gonna, that, that will go up. Okay? But we don't, we don't know how much it'll go up. Bear County appraisal has complete purview in that, in that, so we don't control that. So we wanted to assume, worst-case scenario, we would be looking at our current tax, property tax valuations here in the city of Halotas. Which is why I've starred that, because I wanted to talk about that and, and also this area up here. Okay? So if we were to go for a bond issuance, and this says, by the way, five, now we're switching from the five point five million to the five point zero two three million because the other portion, that four hundred and seventy-seven thousand is EDC. Okay? So now, all I really care about is whether the city can pay, or all we care about, Susan and I, and, and also council, is the five point zero two three million dollar issuance. So the total proposed ad valorem tax collections currently that we are bringing in are two point eight million dollars. Okay? Because we're not proposing to increase taxes, and because we're not proposing to increase the property valuations in the city, frankly, we don't have any control over that, in subsequent fiscal years with the five point zero two three million dollar issuance, it can be likely assumed that our ad valorem collections would remain the same. They, they likely go up a little bit, but for this purpose, demonstration, they're remaining the same. Okay? So our M and O calculations for this next fiscal year that you just approved are two point two three million dollars. Our INS allocations or interest seeking, what we're paying debt service to is six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Okay, which includes the two thousand and two CFOs, the two thousand and seven CFOs, and fifty thousand dollars on the four-year note that we have for the land that we just purchased. Okay? So we know that under this scenario, we are relatively comfortable saying that we can, we can exist as a city under that scenario. The problem is, is that when you look at the five point zero two three million, we then become uncomfortable at a staff level being able to support continuing city operations with the additional debt service. That additional debt service jumps from six hundred and eleven thousand to one million dollars, over one million dollars a year in debt service. And, and because we're maintaining the stable tax rate and tax collections, our M and O allocation goes from two point two three million to one point eight three million, which is a seventeen or an eighteen percent reduction in M and O and a sixty-five percent increase in interest and sinking or debt service. So what I'm saying here is that we are about four hundred thousand dollars in the M and O hole, because I, I cannot, even through creative numbers, come up with four hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you gotta either have it in increased revenue, or you have to decrease expenditures. Okay? And it's very difficult to decrease expenditures, because I think, I do believe that we run a very tight ship here, and many departments are operating on relatively, are operating efficiently. Okay? So I don't think that you can reduce expenditures by four hundred thousand dollars, and I don't know of any way that, in the short term, that you can increase revenues by four hundred thousand dollars very quickly. Now...
Is that for the foreseeable future or for just the next?
That is for the next three to five years. But we still, and I understand, and that's a valid point. The picture does get better over the course of the twenty-year period. But what I, I'm, I need to be concerned with about, can we pay the bills in the next five years? And still operate the city, and the four hundred thousand dollars scares me. Okay? Now, the choices, and these are in no particular order, and we are not recommending these choices, but basically with this, with this structure here, you can either do it, which means go ahead and take the issuance of the five point five million, but make do on less M and O collections, which I don't think is feasible. You can do it, but you basically do it at a later date, and you wait for additional ad valorem tax revenue to offset the M and O deficit. Now, this is critical here because we have had discussions about people being interested in annexations. Okay? So if you have a large residential subdivision come in, yes, that is going to generate additional property tax revenues to offset that four hundred thousand dollars. But there are several problems with that. Number one, it's over a lengthy period of time, five to seven years for that development. Number one, it's over a lengthy period of time, five to seven years, for that development to be at build-out, right? So you don't immediately, and this is something the mayor and I talked with, because I was still under the delusion that we could afford this at one time, and we said, well, you have to look at the full seven-year period in order to be able to realize that revenue. I mean, I understood that, I just didn't want to understand it, if that makes sense. So, you can offset that by additional commercial and additional single-family residential. But that's going to take some time. Or you just hang this up to dry and you don't do any of it at all. Or you ask the EDC to pay for more of the projects. Or you raise the ad valorem tax rate to pay for the water and sewer project, because really, out of the five and a half million dollars, the water and sewer is over $4 million. So it's the vast majority of these, of this issuance. Or you reduce the number of funded projects and you issue other debt obligations in the future, when we can afford the $4 million issuance for the water and sewer. Now, I've been an advocate of the water and sewer project ever since its inception. So it pains me to present this to you, because I believe the water and sewer project is a very good economic development project for the city of Palotes. But ultimately, it is our recommendation to put off the issuance for the State Highway 16 Water and Sewer Project at this time. What we do believe, however, the remaining projects, and let me address that before I go on, because people are going to say, well, then why did we spend $350,000 on an engineering study for water and sewer? Keep in mind that what I am saying here is that I do not, I believe that it's a worthwhile project, we should finish the engineering and have that, that construct, those construction documents ready to go. And wait for two, one or two of these single-family residential developments to come in, to be able to justify keeping city operations at the same level, but still generating more tax revenue to pay for that new issuance. So what I am suggesting here is breaking it up into two issuances, one for these projects here, and one at a later date for the water and sewer project, okay? And so I've highlighted the projects that we are talking about here. The second one is the FM 1560 realignment project. Well, that, as we've talked about before, is a $400,000 match that we are on the hook for to pay TechDOT. That is a project that they're already working on, that it's already funded through grant monies, that this council has already essentially approved, okay? And so, it is my belief that you should issue debt, but that you include the FM 1560 realignment costs in that. Because we know that is a completed project. Frankly, TechDOT's just waiting for us to write him a check and them to finish up their final design. That's, that's, that's what they're waiting for. Palotes Creek Linear Park project that the EDC has taken on, I'm lumping that into this first issuance as well, as well of the 477,000. The FM 1560 Bridge Project, which is the last thing that is on tonight's agenda, is a 300,000, well, it's a, it's a well in excess of a million dollar project, but if you recall, we did not qualify for the, or we did not, were not awarded NPO grant funds for that project. And we were able to work with, the mayor was able to work with Mario Jorge?
Yes.
Over at TechDOT, who is the new district engineer, to say that they will fund the full cost of the project as long as we provide them with a $300,000 check. Now, that is the bridge project between Altaloma and Salteo Flat that floods consistently, and it is a very worthwhile health and safety project. And if we don't pay them the money, it is my fear that eventually that money, those, that will go away, okay? I don't want to have these things linger out there. So, I've lumped that into this project as well. And the last thing is sort of a catch-all for a variety of projects that we have either talked about or that we haven't talked about, and so we've included them here. The first one is the Cedar Trail Culvert Project. Again, we've talked about that, and that is something that TechDOT will fund in the future. They, it's still not on their books, but we do need money for essentially the work that needs to be done outside of the right-of-way, which is essentially grading. It's really not that expensive of a work, but when you're talking about a budget our size, $33,000, I mean, it's hard to just find that money within an existing budget. So whatever is remaining would kind of go towards that Cedar Trail Culvert Project. Drainage infrastructure. The mayor wanted to have for council's consideration, and these are two worthwhile projects, the Antonio Drive drainage or culvert that is existing, if you know that it's essentially, how many, three culverts?
Two 18-inch pipes.
Two 18-inch pipes that go under Antonio Drive near Old Town, that consistently flood, fill with debris, and essentially, you either need to increase the culvert size, probably box culverts would be appropriate, or you create a bridge. Probably box culverts are sufficient for that. But that is one drainage project that should be looked at very heavily. The second one is a drainage project that is at Paragon and Indian Trail. It is an undersized drainage culvert that eventually flows across Paragon and goes into under 1560. So drainage infrastructure. The third thing that we are looking at is, if you recall, within the fire department's budget request for this fiscal year, or excuse me, for next fiscal year, they requested an ambulance, a third ambulance that would be utilized by the EMS as now their first unit. Their older, but newer unit would be, would become their second or standby unit for the EMS. The total cost of that is $165,000 for a new ambulance, okay? And the third thing that we are looking at, and this is something that we have been talking about for at least a year internally, and we may have brought it up before council after our TML conference this last year, was public works equipment. Included on your dais, by the way, are the costs associated with the ambulance of the $165,000 and public works. It's, it's under the additional background material, and it's towards the latter portion of those documents. What we are looking at under public works is called an asphalt zipper, okay? The asphalt zipper is essentially a machine, and I'm not great at this, so bear with me, but essentially, it takes existing right-of-way, it pulverizes it, you add concrete to it, and it immediately compacts into a good base material that you can then overlay with asphalt, okay? The idea there is that it saves time and hopefully saves money, because our crews can essentially redo a road in a matter of days, okay? Because it's using the existing equipment, or excuse me, the existing material. And we feel comfortable now that the budget is approved with the three guys that we have, the one public works supervisor, he has the potential or the ability to manage this type of project and this type of equipment. So in my opinion, it is now appropriate for our public works department to start requesting these types of things, and we already know that in certain portions of the city, we have some road issues that need to be addressed. And so we are proposing to do a lot of that work in-house and subcontracting the asphalting out to third-party companies. So, that is the $125,000, that is actually the exact amount that it would cost us to buy that for, buy that machine. So if you lump those things together, or you rearrange those dollar amounts in any way that council wishes to do so, you're looking at $320, or $323,000 essentially. Adding all of that up, you are looking at a debt issuance of $1.5 million, simply because I like round numbers. So you're looking at $1.5 million. Now, the question that becomes, okay, can we afford the $1.5 million? If you look at it, using the same assumptions and using the same numbers that we looked at before, and actually, on the $1.5 million debt, you'll see on the paperwork that I put on, on the dais, there were revised numbers from First Southwest for one and a half million dollars, the interest rate went down to 3.18 rather than 3.38. But we're still assuming the same ad valorem collections, because we're not raising the tax rate. The MNO allocation then becomes much more tolerable, because you're going from 2.23 million to 2.14 million, which is a 3.98% reduction. I think that's tolerable, because we have many other line items within our budgets that, that do continue to grow year over year. Sales tax, franchise fees, things of that sort, because the city is growing. So I think that's a tolerable reduction in the MNO, okay? INS. INS is then going from $611,000 to approximately $700,000, which is a 14.52% increase at, which is significantly better than a 65% increase. So, what you're looking at here, instead of a $400,000 hole, you're looking at an $88,000 or an $89,000 hole. And I, we believe, both Susan and I, that that is tolerable, given the assumptions that we're making, that we're not increasing, that, excuse me, that property, property valuations are remaining static under this model. We're not allowing for any additions in any of the other revenue light items that we have. This is something that is absorbable into a five and a half million dollar budget. The $400,000 frankly scares us. So we would not recommend a five and a half million dollar issuance at this time. We do believe that the EDC can afford the $477,000, and so we've lumped that in with other projects to a one and a half million dollar bond issuance at this time. And we feel comfortable, correct, in saying that this is something that, that we would recommend if council wishes to pursue these projects at that dollar level.
Rick, it didn't look to me, if you go back to the recommendations, like you had included any dollars for the drainage infrastructure?
No, and that's what I was talking about, how we would have to, if you wanted to stay with the 1.5...
Right.
We would have to...
Eliminate either the ambulance or the other...
Well, you would either have to eliminate something, or you would lower the costs associated with those projects. Whether you're lowering the quality of an ambulance, or you're lowering the ability of the $125,000 machine that we have proposed here, I mean, there's other options with all of these things. And the other thing you can look at is, we are, the $33,000 that we are projecting for Cedar Trail Culvert, that is frankly just something in there as a placeholder, because we don't really know how much that project is going to cost, or what TechDOT is going to require us to do completely, but we're pretty confident that it's really just grading work and that we can handle most of that in-house. So the $33,000 that we have there is just a placeholder, really. So that's what I was suggesting there, that's why I added drainage infrastructure without a dollar amount, that you can adjust that, or you can eliminate, it's whatever council's purview is, if, if anything, if you want to do anything.
Another thing we could look at doing is working up an estimate on those drainage projects, one or both of them, and see if Southwest, as you talked to them today, would run us another model with maybe a 1.75 million debt issue?
Uh, we can do that.
If council wants to include all of that.
We can certainly do that.
Okay, so, that being, you're done, we'll have a motion and a second to discuss and take action on the debt issuance. So if we have a motion, please? Anybody?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, what agenda item are we on, 23?
We're on 23.
Oh. Make a motion to discuss and take action on agenda item 23.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion from Byes and a second from Blue. So Bert, it's your motion, you're first up on discussion, please.
So, basically, we're putting the, the water and sewer line on the back burner for now.
That's the recommendation.
If we go with, we are with, with staff's recommendation, is that correct?
Correct. Keeping in mind that, as Rick said, we would go ahead and proceed, the EDC would proceed with completing the plans, once the plans are complete, it's a valid project. It's just a matter of delaying the start date.
I was just wondering how long we can delay it and still have the engineering still be viable. And another problem with that is, we keep waiting to do it, things change so much environmentally and all, up and down the road, but I, I understand what, what, what Rick and Susan are telling us too. You know, $400,000 is not easy to find, so...
Well, and keep in mind that we had to realistically get to this point with the plans and everything, to have the viable numbers to be able to make the decision.
Okay. That's all I had.
Alex, your second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rick, I have a bunch of questions, actually, in my mind, and, and a couple of things. One of the options that was presented at the original part was to, basically, when you mentioned some of the options, number four was to ask the EDC to pay more. I don't know whether not, whether they have the capacity to pay more. I didn't see anything that said they would or wouldn't have that capacity. And whether or not, if they could pay more, would that mean that the remainder would be within something that we could do? So that was one kind of thought I had. I mean, we, we bring up the idea that they could, but we don't know how much, and we don't know whether they can, and whether or not that makes some of the rest of it affordable to us. I agree with Bert in a sense that, if we put it off too long, then, then we're going to have to redo a number of things as, as the physical terrain and environment change towards the area that we've already done. The other thing that I don't know if it's possible to do, and I know that the plans for the water are a big chunk of it, but then the plans for the sewer are another chunk of it, do they have to be done concurrently? Could we do, could we separate that project out into some where we could manage, say, I know that the water makes a complete loop, it goes all the way over from where it is at Circle A and, and Highway 16 all the way over, but, and so that's either an all or nothing, I would imagine. But the sewer, maybe not, because the sewer doesn't run complete. Could the sewer actually be run up the hill, but not quite over the hill from Circle A, you know, maybe going up to the top? That's a small section. Is that something that we could look at that, maybe utilize that portion of it to where we could get that accomplished? I know we have a, a number of entities in that area that were very anxious to have the ability to have a sewer line in order to do expansions and such, they can't do right now. And what would that cost? Is that something maybe that EDC could afford, even in this whole discussion? The other, the other thought I had was...
May I address something?
Yeah, sure, because I'm, I have a few more.
I can tell you, I can tell you right now that the EDC cannot pay for the full cost of the water and sewer project. I can tell you that right now. The, the $30,000 that they have associated with the 477,000 that they would be taking out, that is something that can be absorbed by their budget, because they typically have about $500,000 to $600,000 in reserves every year. But the additional debt service associated with the five and a half, I mean, essentially at that point, their debt service would be very similar to what ours would, would be.
No, I, I didn't figure that they could afford the whole thing. The proposal said to have them support more of it.
Yes.
And the question is, what could they support? And is there any way to divide up the project so we could at least get something done with maybe a little bit more from the city, a little bit from EDC, and at least get something started to generate that, that process going, rather than delay everything all completely? Because I know it's a major project and it's very meaningful to the city, and especially those in that area.
Yeah, we have not looked at those, whether the EDC could pay for any additional amount yet, simply because we had a standing agreement, if you will, that the city would pay the construction and the EDC would finish, would finish engineering. And so I didn't, we didn't spend a lot of time in that regard because of that standing agreement. I mean, really, if, if that is something that council wishes to pursue, I would think that I would need to address that with the EDC at their next meeting, and that would give Susan and I some more time to see what we then would feel comfortable the EDC going up to, as far as debt service, and it may be nothing in addition to the $40,000, of course, but there may be some wiggle room in there. So, we can certainly do that if that is something that council wishes us to do.
I'm, I'm just bringing it up, because I, we're being asked to make a decision on something to move forward with a certificate of obligation, and if we don't know the answer to that, and we make a decision, then it's kind of hard to backtrack on it. The, the next question that I had was, we have multiple certificates out already right now that are, that are there. What are the interest rates on those? Are they at a stage where we could call one? So, if we do one and a half, and we have one that only has a million left, we can call it, and it's at a higher interest rate, could we borrow two and a half, pay that one off, and make some more room within our month, you know, within our annual budget? You know, are, are we able to do that to, to create some more room to allow for a project that we feel is important? You know, if, if the, if this CFO you're talking about now is a 3.18% interest rate, and we have one out there that's at four and five that we could retire by borrowing more, then it allows us a little bit more flexibility. You know, we always pay the stuff off with the highest interest rate if you can, and I don't know if that, I don't have any of that data with me here tonight for this, to determine if that's an option. I'd like to know if it's a choice before we make a final decision.
Yeah, the amortization schedules on those two CFOs are in your budget booklet. As I recall, the 2002 CFOs will be paid off in 2017. Am I right on that, Susan?
That is, that is correct.
2017... Two thousand and seventeen, so, another couple of years, two thousand and two's going to go away anyway. And there's, there's no, uh, early payment on the oh-seven one, am I correct?
They're not callable.
Yeah, they're, they're not callable.
Okay, so that, that...
So, we're stuck with that debt.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the rates, they're comparable to the two thousand and seven, uh, CFOs.
Okay.
And that, that is correct, the two thousand and two do terminate in two, in, in two thousand and seventeen.
Correct.
But, and the, the approximate, uh, totals are about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
But that was included in your estimate of the four hundred, or all of a sudden, two years from now, we're going to have an extra a hundred and forty thousand on our budget that we...
You will have an extra hundred and forty thousand dollars in the budget, but, but we're still looking at versus the four hundred.
So, that, that'll be a hundred and forty thousand plus or minus that will not, uh, go to our debt service, but instead, it'll go to the M and M.
Unless you take out debt service.
Unless you take out more debt, and then you won't benefit from it as much.
No, but I know, but we were talking about the foreseeable next number of years, having four hundred thousand, which, really, in two years, won't be that.
Right.
It'd be smaller.
Correct.
I mean, a lot of other things change, I get it. The, the final question that I had, had to do with the ability to, to go with a lower amount, and if, if three years from now, we decide to do this, are we going to keep going with all of these things? And, and, and what impact will that have on us with having more and more and more small ones, as opposed to doing it in one, a larger amount? And as I recall from the presentation from the First Southwest, is there some advantage in interest rate from having a bigger one versus smaller ones? And are we actually going to end up paying more in the end by going with little, little chunks, instead of going with a, a more substantial one, from a rate perspective?
And that is something that I don't have an answer for right now, I will have to get with Ann, and, uh, see if, if there are implications for that.
Yeah, but the rate did go down from a three point three eight to a three point one eight.
That is correct, but that may not be associated with the dollar amount, it may be the interest rate.
Yeah, it's how it's, it's how it's modeled, so, we'll, we'll have to look at some of that.
So, those were the questions that I had as we went through the presentation, and if we're making a final decision, it'd be nice to know some of those answers before we commit the city to a particular thing, and then we find out later that we could have done something a little different, maybe add a project, or, or do something different, uh, in the end. Thank you.
You bet. Paul, we'll switch over to this, sir.
I guess, certainly, we have to put off the water and sewer line. Um, I'm, I'm in agreement to fund the other projects.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm just a little leery on, can we not afford the ambulance and the other things, just out of excess that we have in the funds now, or maybe in the ne- over the next couple of years? Um, taking that out of the equation to borrow money?
We, we...
I would assume that our abhorrent tax rate is going to eventually increase, um, you know, certainly, there's new neighborhoods coming in. So, I think down the line, we'll have some of the money reduces and stuff. That, that's my thought.
Yeah, we had looked at, uh, paying cash for some of this stuff out of, uh, our reserves, and, uh, decided to present it this way first, before we looked at that. But, but that's certainly something we could, uh, furnish, uh, in the future for this discussion. Got all you? Uh, Al, uh, Ed, sorry?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's unfortunate we can't move forward with all the projects as we, you know, once thought, but, uh, you know, if it's not financially feasible, it's not. I think, and when I look at the other projects that, that, per the city's recommendation, and I see, if you could just go over to that, yeah, the Helotis Creek Linear Park project, you know, that one, for me, as a business owner, I, I look at that, and I say, that's more of a luxury, there's no rate of, there's no return on investment in that one, okay? There may be, but it may be difficult to quantify, okay? And so, I would say that we go with everything in there and postpone the Helotis Creek Linear Project.
Okay, keep in mind that the linear park project, uh, the EDC agreed to handle that debt.
Okay.
And so, they, they would actually be paying for that part of the debt, and that's in the calculations that we, we have.
So, that's the total cost of that project?
That's for their, the engineering costs.
Yes.
And, and the anticipated overruns, if any.
Okay.
Uh, should be covered by that figure, and the EDC has already approved, uh, handling that project.
It's also a grant, we've al- they also received a grant.
Yeah, it's a grant, so that's basically...
It's based on the grant amount, too.
Right.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I was just confused, if, if that's the case, then why is it included in the, being considered as a overall?
Because it would be part of the total, it would be part of the total, just like the ten million dollars that was taken out in CFOs
Yeah.
in two thousand and, uh, seven was a four and a six.
Mm-hmm.
The four was an EDC debt, uh, but the city's responsible for all of it, and they re- reimburse the city for their portion. So, that's the same way it would work here.
Okay.
That would be assigned to the EDC, and they would handle that part of the payment.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, we're cosigners.
We're, yeah, we're definitely cosigners, the EDC, I know. Uh, I thought, when we had that presentation, I thought they were going to kind of rework the numbers to see if we could, as Alex said, refinance the old debt, and see if there was something that could be done to, you know, roll that into it with a new interest rate, maybe a lower rate than what we had.
We have, we have worked with First Southwest, uh, not First Southwest, I'm sorry, Southwest Securities with Mark McClany, and, because he was the, uh, underr- he was the underwriter, the, the guy that put the deal together for the two thousand and two and two thousand and seven CFOs. And it was their recommendation at that time not to, not to refinance that debt. Number one, it was, it was too late for the two thousand and two, because we're almost ready to pay it off. But I believe he said that the, the, the rate that we're paying on that debt, what is the rate that we're paying? It's like two point nine or three, or...
It's right at three, as I recall.
Would not, we would not be able to, to, to refinance at a lower rate for, for that debt. So, we have looked at that, it's been probably six months to a year since we had looked at that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it was their recommendation at that time not to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if, if it's council, we can, we can broach that subject again on the two thousand and, uh, seven, if that is something y'all wish to do.
So, let me ask you this question, would, the, the rate, uh, was at three three eight, and it dropped to three one? What was that a result of? Just less money outstanding, or...
I have a fe- I have a feeling it's not so much with the, uh, less money. I, I, Jorge Delgado, who ran these rates at First Southwest, alluded to the fact that that was, that was really more related to the market itself.
To market condition.
That the market went from the three point three eight, which we received that a month or two ago, down to the three point one eight in that interim.
Okay.
And, and the interest rate on the oh-seven CFOs is three point nine three?
Three point nine three.
Right. And again, the amortization schedules in your, in your book.
And I know that Mark McClany obviously looked at the cost associated with the refinancing of the debt versus how much we would save. And, and again, his recommendation, correct, was that it would just wasn't worth it at this time to do so?
Right, and he was right, yes, especially on the oh-two, and then on the oh-seven, it's definitely be hard for us to find. It's, they wouldn't even want to consider constructing a wall there.
Well, it would be difficult to overcome the fees involved, too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, legal fees, okay.
The, the...
Three point nine taxes, and, and whoever's holding that should help, which...
Yeah.
Anything else, Ed?
No.
Uh, Cindy?
The, uh, one, two, three, four, there was five projects, so the, the last, the Cedar Trail Culvert and all that, was that added after you decided to take off the water and sewer, or was that always part of the project?
When, when we decided to pull out the water and sewer, we looked at some other things that we could possibly put into a smaller issuance, and so, we just lumped those in there as things for you guys to consider.
So, those were added to...
Yeah, the Cedar, the Cedar Chair, the Cedar Trail was always in there.
Cedar Trail was always in there, yeah.
It was, and it was the drainage infrastructure, the ambulance, and the public works equipment that we added in, essentially, in order to get to that one and a half million dollars, and plus, we've always been, those have always been on our want list.
Okay, um, why do we have to do, if, if, if the whole issue is that we don't have enough money to pay that interest or whatever the, you know, the, the loan amount, then why would we be at, why would we want one point five? Why don't we, why don't we leave all the drainage infrastructure, the emergency services, and the public? Why, why did we add these things that, yes, we've always wanted, but I'm, I'm kind of with, uh, with Councilmember Fredericks? I don't understand why we would, I, I don't like the idea of putting emergency services, that, that, and the ambulance and the public works equipment into a bond, an issuance of, of a bond money. I think that we could do that some other time.
Yeah, and we don't, and we don't have to, that was just something for...
I don't like that idea now, the, I think a real project, like the Cedar Trail Culvert project, that would work. Drainage, drainage infra- infrastructure, depending on how much it is, I think that would fit in with what we would want this money for. But I think those two, like, capital, equipment-type things are not, are not something we should put in something like that.
So, basically, you're saying, if it has a life that comes anywhere near the, the term of the bond, then it's worth being in there otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is what we, we talked about in our discussion.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
Because the ambulance, right, is five-year, ten-year?
I think, I think Chief said somewhere between five and ten-year.
Yeah, I think that, that we can, we can look into that for another budget year, but, you know, just in our regular, but, but I am very, uh, disappointed about the water and sewer project, um, because we, this is something that, that, you know, we've been wanting for a long, long time. I know the EDC has really, really been pushing on this, and, uh, you know, I do understand, though, that, you know, if, if we're not comfortable, the financial people are not comfortable with, you know, how much money we're going to have to pull to pay for that. That's a lot of money, four hundred thousand. I can understand that, and we have to be responsible about it. Um, I, I do, I would like to know a little bit more about perhaps what the EDC might be able to afford, if they would be willing to put more money into that project. And I think before we make a decision, we need to get them involved.
So, we can put it on their October twenty-second agenda.
I know that they're going to want to know this, this is, like I said, this has been a really important issue for the EDC for a long time, and, um, they've already expended some money and more money to finish the engineering, and I agree with, uh, Councilmember Byes. You know, how long are we going to put it off? If we put it off too long, then we, we, we wasted, how much was our engineering, our engineering cost?
I mean, I, I really...
We don't want to waste those costs.
No, I, I agree, but I think, I think a realistic timeframe on how long it would have to sit on the shelf, so to speak, would be between two and four years, before we could see enough additional property tax revenue coming in, which is why we will continue to provide annexation requests to, to council, because that additional ad- or property tax revenue really does impact something like this.
Sure.
And, and if I may interject here, I certainly understand, three hundred and fifty thousand, I don't want it...
Su- Susan, would you, uh, speak into the night? Sorry.
Otherwise, the...
You're on TV.
Otherwise, the TV.
You're on TV. You're on.
I certainly understand the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar concern, or even a thirty-five thousand dollar, or thirty-five dollar concern if we're thinking that it's money that will never have any value. I understand that completely. But I also, as, when we were, the three of us were having interesting conversations about this, I kept stressing in my mind that due diligence is an expense. I mean, in two thousand and seven, we took out a ten million dollar bond with no cost analysis whatsoever. We cannot do that again, so, to me, the due diligence is an expense. Now, what, the three fifty, I hope we can certainly work something out where we can utilize that, that design work. However, in the worst-case scenario, I would, in worst case, I'm not saying I want this to happen, but in worst-case scenario, I'd rather forfeit the three fifty than go willy-nilly with a ten million dollar boondoggle that we did before, where it took us several years to even get our numbers together before we could use that money. So, I am part of the, uh, back off, back off, let's do some due diligence, let's get some better background before we make decisions. Not that I want to lose the three fifty, but I, I am glad we've done all this, and I, I think finding out more about breaking up the water and sewer is a good alternative. It may not be financially a good alternative, but we don't know, and that's due diligence.
Yeah, the only concern that I have on breaking up the water and sewer is that there is a significant cost savings when you go out for bid for those projects being together. So, and the mobilization of...
Right.
...construction equipment is very expensive, and so, my suspicion, although I don't know the answer to your question, my suspicion is that it would cost us way more to do those projects separate than if we did them together. But, but we will look at that, and we will look at, uh, put this on the EDC's October twenty-second agenda to have not only this presentation, but also a discussion about whether they will be willing to, uh, fund more, and we'll look in the interim as to whether we believe they can fund more. But I, but just, just what, what my initial impression is on that is that, you know, we're talking about, for this, for a five million dollar bond issuance, is three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars additional in, and that's just the first year, uh, additional in, um, in, uh, debt service? Well, the EDC, if it only has a five to six hundred thousand dollar bank balance, and they're already paying three hundred thousand dollars for the oh-seven issuance, then it's going to be very tight in order to, to get them to fund that, I, I don't think that that's possible. But we'll look at all those things in the interim, and we were not asking council, I understand it's on, on the agenda as an action item, we were really not asking for action, we're asking for direction here. Because you all still have multiple steps before you issue any debt at all, anyway. Um, so...
Yeah, uh, if I may, we didn't get a lot of this information until just this week, so, uh, like Rick says, we were never expecting to have an, an actual decision, because there are still some questions that we have to ask. You all have brought up some great questions, and we had, uh, some of our own. And it would also give us time, if we would, uh, wait to, uh, do anything here, to get some numbers together on the Antonio Road, uh, project, at, at least. And, uh, so, what I would recommend, if you guys would consider it, is just, uh, rather than postpone to a date certain, go ahead and postpone indefinitely on this, let us gather the information, uh, let the EDC talk about it, uh, next month, and then we will bring this back sometime, probably before the end of the year, with more details and answering a bunch of your questions and all. So, that would be a viable way to handle this, just postpone indefinitely. If, uh, Bert, you would want to amend your motion?
I would like to amend my motion and, uh, postpone this agenda item twenty-three indefinitely.
Uh, Alex, would you go along with that amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay, knowing full well that any other, uh, ideas or questions you have, please shoot them at Rick, and, and then we'll follow up with the engineer. I, in, in talking about this, I could not see where a set of engineering plans would have an expiration date, so I don't think that's a consideration, although environmental issues could, uh, change. But this is going to be a complete set, but we will check on that. The only, the only concern that I brought up when we talked about this is that, as we wait, costs could go up. However, looking at the other side, they could go down also. So, it's just a matter of, of, uh, making a tough decision and doing what we have to do. But with that motion to postpone indefinitely, is there any discussion on that motion, that amended motion? So, the amended motion is...
If I got a just, two other things to add to the, to the mixed one. I know that the cer- the, uh, issuance of a COO has a overhead cost, a fixed cost associated with it, so breaking it up in multiple ones is going to have us incur an additional cost that's associated with issuing, and we want to think about that, too. The other thing, and I just thought about this, as you were talking about the, the changes, were our engineering costs under the, already including the fact that part of this area will be affected by the, uh, reroute of the Circle A intersection? Has that all been taken into consider, because some of this is going up the hill, where, where all of that, any utility, and having to be moved, and all that stuff associated with the widening of the road, and the, the moving of the u- the, uh, so that's already part of the engineering cost?
Yes.
Yes.
That was it.
Okay, so the amended motion is to postpone this item indefinitely. Uh, no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion then, uh, is to postpone that indefinitely, which essentially, uh, kills that agenda item for now. That takes us to item twenty-four, and this is, uh, a resolution for an advanced funding agreement on the replacement of the culvert and bridge on FM fifteen sixty, or the replacement of the culvert with a bridge. So, if we can have a motion in a second, discuss this. Motion in a second?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we discuss, take action on agenda item twenty-four.
We have a motion from Byes, do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Fredericks? And this is, uh, Bert's motion, so Bert, uh, you have any questions or discussion on this?
No, I mean, it's, 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 it's ready to go, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't see any...
We want to make sure that we did it before or after Item 23, because we didn't want you to approve this, and then we'd be at 23 and say, we don't want to do any of it. But I think it's...
I think it's critical that if council feels comfortable with at least us going with the one and a half million dollars, that in addition to the, the agreement that we have on the Linear Park Project for the EDC, that we get this executed and sent over to Textod as quickly as we can.
Basically, our part of the, of the project is 20%, right? Am I right about that?
300,000.
They capped it at 300,000, so that's, that's basically what we're anticipating.
Okay, all right, I don't have any, sounds good to me.
Paul?
Sounds good to me.
Cindy?
Yes.
Alex? Ed? Okay, no further discussion, we'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The resolution is approved. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. So I will ask, if there's no objections to adjourning, we will adjourn, no objections, we are adjourned at 9:31.